At 6:00 PM, Council City of Dennis and now the meeting for regular sessions. Tonight's invitational will be given by Pastor Brad Castle. Please grab your chair.
Dear gracious heavenly Father, we approach your throne. I ask you, Lord, to give clarity. I ask you to give the correction and the guidance on what needs to be said and the decisions that need to be made. Thanking you, Lord, for allowing us to be in a country that allows this process to happen. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's listen to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denyed item two, consent agenda. Mayor, will we accept it? Consent agenda. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, must say aye. Fae, if opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Denied item three, public carings. Public carrying three A, auto rental on Horton Street. Ms. Rocket.
Mayor, council, you have a copy of the ordinance and we're having a public hearing today for a revision to the ordinance on chapter twenty-eight, art four, use regulations. The auto rental is currently not allowed in local retail. We're asking you to consider allowing it in a local retail. It is currently allowed in regional retail, commercial, and lot industrial districts. Planning and zoning, I reviewed this and they made a recommendation to allow it in local retail with a conditional use permit, you know, with the normal conditions on it. And staff has recommended approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public carings closed. Faye is the potential buyer here. I don't know, I see Mr. Goff here.
Yes, he is. Jimmy Thompson.
Jimmy, Mr. Thompson, can you come forward, please? Can you just tell us what, I mean, obviously, it's a rental car place. I also saw some limousine service.
Well, that was kind of something tentative, but I'm not sure if we can do all that. I think the limo has to be in some other zoning. But as far as the car rental, it's not going to be a franchise, but it'd be similar to Hertz or Enterprise, something similar to that. You know, it'd be, it's a new company. You know, the location, it's going to get a face that you know it looks like now, but it's going to get, but they, you know, make it look presentable to the eye.
Okay, so I guess really, the only concern that I have is the location right now is it doesn't have adequate parking for your fleet, I don't think, right? So what are you gonna, how are you gonna drive?
It's going to be asphalt, the entire, probably half of it is, it's a lower acre.
Okay, so all of the cars will be parked on paved parking?
Yes, and we're going to have awnings similar to the ones they have at Rennie, show lights, something similar to that. And it's already got two big shops on it already. And there's a house on it now, but it's pretty old. I think we're going to end up having it moved out there and have something more modern put back there.
Your estimate fleet size?
Fleet, I'll have them start with twenty cars. See how that, if they need more, then we'll probably add some more, about twenty, is what we want to go with.
You also plan on putting up a security fence?
Yes. On the, I think on the east side, it has a fence for the loop shop. There's a third fence to the back on that one side. We're going to add a fence on that only rest front that's on the other side and then fix it off around to the front.
Is it going to have one side, like maintenance and mechanics there?
No, that'll be done, that's going to be done outsourced. We're not going to do any maintenance, no oil changes, no tire service. That'll be done somewhere else.
You'll do the detailing on site, though, probably?
Yeah, we'll clean them out right there. That's also something we looked at down the street there. They've got that car spool thing there. It's really reasonable, so that might be an option we might use over there.
Do you envision this to be, like, late model auto cars, like, five years or newer?
Couple of years old. We may get a few new ones if we can get a good deal on them. I'd like to have ten new cars and then maybe two a couple of years old. I don't want junk sitting out there.
So, Mr. Hannah, what do we need to do as far as a motion to just ensure that parking is part of the conditional use? Because, I mean, obviously, ordinance today prevents you from parking on the grass.
That's correct. And so, Faye, help me understand it, but there are really two components to this.
Yes.
The first, and this is what we're discussing right now, is you're mending the zoning ordinance to allow for conditional use for rental vehicles. And then when we take up the gentleman's request for a conditional use permit, we can place conditions on it at that point.
Okay, all right. I understand. So that's two separate actions. Okay. Any other questions? Well, Mr. Thompson up here. Thanks, sir. Okay, so on this first agenda item, then we're just amended the zoning, allow conditional use. Mayor, move that we do that.
Sir.
Have motion, Councilman Beck, second, Councilman Bradley, all in favor, must say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item three B, public hearing on twenty-four fourteen West Morton. Ms. Rocket.
We have for you an ordinance for a conditional use permit for the auto rental. It contains one point zero five acres of land at twenty-four fourteen West Morton. Mr. Goff is the seller, Jimmy Thompson is the agent, and Ms. Wilson, the buyer. They would like to locate the car rental there. They, he said he stated he would like to have up to twenty cars and it would be similar to Hertz at his business. He will come back with a site cleaning, third cleaning and zoning, and he plans on covering his cars, so that will be approved by them if this is approved. The, we notified eleven property owners. We had two approvals and we have no disapprovals. I think we have copy two case. Planning and zoning did recommend approval with conditions and the limit of the twenty cars plus the hours of operation to be from seven AM in the morning to seven PM at night. And those were the two conditions. Mr. Thompson did say he was willing to pay the area for parking and then put in a new approach off of Morton for his business and possibly remove the building and either put one up or remodel it. He hasn't decided that yet. And staff has recommended approval of this with the conditions, you know, the cars and the.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, public carings closed. Discussion.
On the reported here, since staff report from the planning and zoning commission at the bottom, it says, "Conditions placed on property hours of operation nine to five" and the twenty cars. Was that zoning?
Well, the nine to five was discussed and planning and zoning decided seven to seven would be a better arrangement.
Mr. Chamberlain.
Mayor, if I may interject, I did not take time to circle the wagon with Faye on this. This is going to be kind of a surprise to her, but I'd like, I'd like to suggest that council consider adding some of the amenities that Mr. Thompson was going, suggested that he was going to construct with this, since it is a conditional use permit. You zone for use, not for the, not for the user. So if those are the things, like covered parking, paved parking, screened, vehicle storage, he's not going to have all those vehicles out front, then you have probably some screens take place. Those are things that council wants to see. Those are the type of things that would really be best included in a conditional use permit. Those are all applicable to the use of that particular lot and can be applied as a condition to that use. The other thing I'd ask you all to consider is something that we've always done really well here in Dennison, I think, is allowing the market to dictate what the market is best at dictating. Hours of operation seems to be one of those things that the market should be able to dictate. And I don't know if we gain anything by limiting hours to seven AM to seven PM. That's my personal and professional perspective. I know that it differs in P and Z and they have their reasons. I wasn't at the meeting, and so I don't know exactly what their reasons were. Faye may be able to provide better insight than that.
Well, they felt that seven o'clock, if somebody was going to rent a car, they could do it before work and/or after work, and that's where they kind of put seven and seven.
I just don't really care. I'm in a retail business. So as far as from a motion standpoint, Mr. Hannah, we just need to make that a form of motion, conditional use is the word.
Yes, sir. Any conditions that you would like to see placed on that line? Through requisite for using as an auto rental dealership, need to be listed in the motion.
Mr. Hannah, do you think that covered parking adds significant value to the conditions here?
I think the owner may want to have it from a storm standpoint, storm protection standpoint. That may be why he's doing it, but I'd have to ask him. I don't know. It can be done very attractively. If the car dealerships do it, it's an attractive.
Could the owner comment on that? Do you plan to cover your?
Yes, sir. It kind of, well, like, it dresses the property up to have cars sitting out there. It's not like a used car like today. I want the property to look presentable. And I do want it to protect the vehicles for insurance purposes, liability, stuff like that. But I want it, I want it to look uniform. When you're driving by, it looks presentable, you know, be attractive to people. But it's going to serve a purpose as well. You know, I'm looking at several different kinds. I don't want to just put a flat, you know, like a flat top, hard panel. If I like that, it's got a kind of a design to it. And also, it's functional.
He's picking up metal or wood structure?
The ones I've looked at, they're kind of a, they're weatherproof canvas. They're built on a frame of a canvas and they've got a shape, so they're on top of, it kind of falls off, rolls off of. I'll go, I'm going to present several of them and then we'll just pick the best one that everybody likes.
Now, is the seven AM to seven PM creating any conflicts for your business?
No, that'd be fine. I just didn't have enough thought before because I wasn't really sure. But seven to sevens would be right at my alley. I think that'd be good for us.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for auto rental and with adding on there that we have covered parking for the vehicles in the front of the establishment, paved parking, twenty car limit, and for me, it's no hours, no limit on the hours. So it's for the deal. And then the security, a screened fencing to cover the back portion, I would assume of the cars parked in the back. Does that sound about right on the screen fencing?
Yeah, I think maybe a more precise word there would be screening, a fence that can screen vehicle storage from a private. That wasn't immediately available for rental, so, and I don't know if you're going to have five cars out front, but you're not going to have your whole fleet out front.
Well, the picture that you see here, I'm not going to have any cars on facing Horton Street. They're going to be lined up, one towards the park. Up here, I'm going to keep the grass and where the landscaping is, I'm going to keep that there. Where the brick is, I'll have a sign there. Back where you see the road is, the pavement will start there backwards, that way, towards the back. And keep the grass in front of you. Where that car is, that way, where the parking is, towards the back.
Since this is a flocks, but the thing to do is to say, fencing that screens vehicle storage has approved by P and Z. Love P and Z to help kind of fence that out, decide not to approve it, Mr.?
What, that?
Have motion. Have motion, Councilman Beck, second, Councilman Malvern, all in favor, must say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item three C, public hearing on eighty-seven West Morton. Rocket.
Mayor, council, we have for you an ordinance for a conditional use permit for a major minor auto repair, Marshall District, for property out of the Nolan's addition, lot seven through nine, lot three. Mr. Myers is the owner and he's wanting to lease the building to a client that would operate a repair business inside the building. And we notified fifteen property owners. We had one approval and no disapprovals. Planning and zoning commission recommended that approval with the conditions of, they came up with the seven and seven again, and the, that all work was to be done inside the building. The building is large. It can accommodate several cars inside to be worked on and repaired. There is parking between the two buildings for customers. That location is vacant right now, so this is a public hearing, this is a.
Thank you, Faye. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item?
Name and address, please, for the record. I'm John Munson. I live at eleven twenty-seven West Morton. I'm the agent for Mr. Myers, actually, the estate of Charlie Myers. And this property is kind of a car road there. The original request was made for someone that was coming out of Arkansas. They decided not to come and found another even liked them better. This is a company out of Paris, Texas, that is called Team Richardson. They, apparently, Mr. Richardson's from Dennison. He's coming back to Dennison. He is in the business of building the tubular frames for race cars. He's in the used car business as well, but that particular building is going to be focused on the manufacturing of these tubular cars, repair of them and so forth. These, these type of cars haven't really been to Grayson Motor Speedway. This particular guy has apparently been racing for NASCAR. He's a longtime friend of Mike McCullough's son who races the Grayson Motor Speedway. They cover a lot of territory. I don't know how many people he's going to hire. It's not an engine shop as such where you might say, oh, is there going to be engine noise? That's basically done once the tubular frames are manufactured, they are covered, I think. I'm not in the business of that. I've seen them, as most of you have, and they have skin on them. But the engine is typically an after, after construction feature and, the way I understand it, they are knowledgeable of engines and go through engines, but that's not what's going to happen in this. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. Any questions, Mr. Thompson?
Prepack manufacturing for the frames that.
It's basically, these are, you've seen those cars, the frames don't look like much, but they're tubular type construction with front rear axles and very little complex as far as riding. But it's apparently a heck of a sport there that he's heavily involved in. I was over in Paris, seeing his shop on Saturday and getting the lease signed. He's got a huge motor home and he's got a trailer, enclosed trailer, where he's been coming here the last few weekends and racing with Mr. Mappella. And that trailer has, you drive the first car in, then there's hydraulic lift, and you drive the second car in, and I'm not sure what all the business the guy's in, but he seems to be doing a good job.
Okay.
What's our current noise ordinance as a standard for the city there? Are we at eighty-five dB or what's?
It's going to be dependent upon, I think the general nuisance statutes would probably have more applicability with this than anything else, because our noise ordinance is pretty much time to amplify noise. You can't drive by and be a nuisance, from a reasonable person's standpoint, but if they were, like Champion Co., for example, we work with them and they're in the middle of production on things and it's the hot summer months, the doors are open, and there's a window of time then where they produce a lot of noise, you know? But we, I know we've worked with them in the past and continue to do so. I imagine we could do the same thing with this particular business if they do produce a lot of noise. But as far as what our actual applicability is in this particular case, I'd have to look at it and talk to Mr. Munson about exactly what the uses are, but.
No different than any other shop?
No different than any other shop.
All right.
And the request was not to be repairing cars in your, it's all inside the building. And that's a mention of, like, thirteen thousand's worth of metal building.
Yes, sir. Anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, public carings closed. Discussion, motion of council.
May I ask to approve?
Have motion, Councilman Bradley, second, Councilman Malvern, all in favor, must say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item three D, public hearing on twenty-nine hundred block of Wood Lake Road. Ms. Rocket.
Mayor, council, we have an ordinance for you which we'd like to downzone the property from commercial to multifamily, District Two. The Chip Piazza owns this property and he wants to incorporate this into his development of apartments. And this is going to allow him a wider and safer entrance into the apartment complex. And planning and zoning reviewed this and recommended approval, staff's recommended approval. We had one disapproval on this at person across the street at twenty, twenty-eight thirty, Wood Lake Road, and he just didn't want additional apartments.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, public carings closed. I'm on Mr. Piazza's here. If council has any questions, we tackle this issue at length back in, whenever we change them, we get it. Motion for council.
May I approve?
Sir.
Have motion, Councilman Malvern, second, Councilman Bradley, all in favor, must say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item three E, public hearing on seventeen twenty-eight West Morton. Ms. Rocket.
Mayor, council, Red River Rock Grillity is the owner. Kathy McDaniel is the leasing for a thrift shop. What she would like to do is place her goods outside her building for display. Currently, she's uncommercial and she cannot do this, but in local retail, we can, and she's wanting to downzone her property for commercial to local retail, or actually, it's her lease. I think Mr. Munson's the agent for this also. We notified eight property owners. We had no comment either way. Planning and zoning recommended approval and staff's recommended approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Name and address again, please, for the record.
John Munson, eleven twenty-seven West Morton. One of the things about the outside displays is that it's only during business hours. This is a resale, resale thrift shop. In their desks, at times, there are, is office furniture, maybe characters and so forth, but her business, maybe it's impulse, but during the time since she was noticed that she couldn't put things out there, her business went to a negative. And so, I handled the leasing for Ms. Eggman, Red Rock Grillity is here, and we decided to make the request and see if we could keep this one open.
Is there any questions for Mr. Munson? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item? There being none, the public carings closed. Discussion from council.
I do have some reservations on the display of it. It's on Main Street. I have the same issues along our Main Street, on the south side, due to south side in Dennison, that the business is on, but I do have some reservations on it, but since it's gone through planning, zoning, all that, everybody else, and I understand it's what they have to do to make the business. Is there any way we can limit the number of objects or go in there and say, you know, what type of, certain type of objects or something? Is it pretty much displayed, no display?
I think with the current language in the local retail section, as under orders would control, this isn't a conditional use permit. So whatever is in our order, that's what we're controlling.
Robert, what was the rationale behind the staff recommendation?
I think there wasn't any opposition from the public, and so that was, that was the deal. I do know that we received some phone calls on this from citizens that were concerned about it, just like COVID forces went out and said, hey, you can't do this. It is an entry corridor and this could be an opportunity for council to provide some staff direction on similar cases that are out there as we move forward. So I wouldn't take staff's recommendation as a, you've got to do this kind of thing. This is not, this is more, this is much more of a policy type decision than it was in the beginning.
I ride that area and I've seen the material close out there. It didn't look like it was a problem. I don't know if there's been a problem, but it's been going on.
Are there any issues to table on this till the next council meeting? But at our depth on our.
You could table it. You can get more details on what the local retail is under, or if it allows. You could also redanate it back to P and Z if you want them to have more of an in-depth conversation with the, kind of assess this out for council.
I guess the only thing is, if she downzones, do we have a lot of other opportunities to downzone throughout the community that could prevent a problem? I agree with Mr. Malvern. I mean, the way she's done it has been tasteful as far as the, it's not been junky, but again, what are we, what are we doing long-term in other locations, I think, needs some.
You may want to look at the ordinance of local retail and what it's allowed, what it allows.
I remember exploring some there.
We do have a lot of general retail on Morton. We do have a lot of general retail on Main Street.
Which allows you to do that.
I'd make one further comment. And I guess the, the problem in these type things, and I manage a lot of retail, and one particular center has Easy Home.
As, as what?
Easy Home. And I've been on them probably most of their existence, even though they've been there a long time. You know, we've got to have it. They happen to display motors, lawn mowers, and weeders, and, um, some home shops look pretty, they can just go over with signage and displays, making that's going to pull people in. And, and you know, you go up and down a lot of streets, and you will see, um, and I'm sure it helps the business, but for example, the Harley's store up the street. And they've got Harley's out there, and I'm sure that draws, um, customers. So it's, this is not the only store in the world that displays up front. And I don't know what the business philosophy about, um, how, how you can, you can go to the supermarkets, you can go to Walmart, you can go to Unite. And whether it's stacks of fertilizer, or Harley's, or lawn mowers, or desks. I, I've never really gotten, and Easy Home's a pretty big company. And they pay the rent, but, uh, some of the perspective in that particular case is, are the displays safe, are the displays a potential, on the sidewalk, potential trip hazards? But, um, it's, it's pretty difficult, uh, to try to control rental centers. Unite will typically have displays. You can go to Aaron's Insurance, or Aaron's in Dennison. They've got lawn mowers, they've got furniture on the front side.
As far as that retail, yes, Mr. Hannah?
Mayor, visiting with Courtney here on a, there seems to be some, some discussion on this, and what's the right thing to do. One option council could look at is authorizing or directing essentially staff to work with her for outside storage over a six-month period. Remand this back to, to P and Z, have them invest, have them discuss local retail and, and commercial. If there's, because one of the things we're looking at is blending those two anyways from a zoning change perspective. It's part of a larger change of zoning ordinance. They could explore that over a six-month period. Her business wouldn't be impacted, and the community can have a discussion on, on the positive and negative qualities of having outside display along the corner of merchandise over that six-month period of time. And if, if, if P and Z and council and the community have the discussion, decide they don't want to allow it, that certainly would give her ample time to figure out what she needs to do with, with her business without being negatively impacted. May be a way forward.
I like that recommendation, actually, because again, when retail, you, you retail set your goods outside, and you bring them in, and, and the points about, you know, I mean, it's the, the problem is sometimes the stigma with resale items and, and lawn mower repair is, is that they're used. And Harley does that for a reason, because everybody wants to see a Harley on the outside of their building. They don't want to see grandma's dresser out there necessarily. So that's, um, but we need to be consistent, so I like the, the recommendation. Anybody with a motion?
Have a motion that's stated by Mr. Hannah.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, by saying aye. All right, those like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four A, member appointment to the TAPS board. Mr. Raleigh's our current member. It's, it's time to reappoint a member. I think he's agreed to serve again if someone would so graciously nominate him.
Mayor, I nominate Raleigh to the TAPS board.
Sir.
Have motion with Councilman Beck, second with Councilman Malvernall, if everybody's saying aye. All right. Opposed. Motion carries. Council will now go into executive session, pursuit to Chapter five hundred of the Tennessee German Code to consultancy attorney regarding TCUA water rights, consultancy attorney to regarding complicated litigation on the Marley case, the Abishrin case, the EPH bankruptcy, and litigation of the Foster bankruptcy. Time is six thirty-five.